Order the November ninth, twenty twenty-three Ventnor City Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Would all rise for the flag salute? Thank you. Lisa, roll call.
Commissioner Kribel, let the record reflect Commissioner Kribel is absent. Commissioner Mento?
Here.
Mayor Langria?
Here. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the law. Uh, we have some fun things to do right now. We have to swear in Maria Mento as our commissioner. Want to step down front? So as everybody here knows, Maria has been our commissioner since, uh, last February. But on Tuesday, she was fully elected to this office. I'm very happy for her. Congratulations. That was a landslide victory. So it was a great night for her and the city event. She does, she has been with us since we started. Um, she's been a great city administrator. She's dove right into this job and really has done a great job. Still monitoring funds for it, so we're excited. So I get to swear her into it. So that's the joy for me.
Hi, Maria Mento.
Psalmic swearer for her.
Do small psalmic swearing for.
That will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
That will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
To the governments established in.
Into the government established in.
United States.
United States.
And this state.
And in this state.
Under the, uh, under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully and partially.
And then I will faithfully and partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office of.
All the duties of the office of.
Commissioner.
Commissioner.
From November eighth, twenty twenty-three through May seventh, twenty twenty-four.
From November eighth, twenty twenty-three through May seventh, twenty twenty-four.
According to the best of my skill and ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my skill and abilities, so help me God.
Hey, next up, we have, um, Jim Rotella is going to do a, a presentation for us on a redevelopment plan. I think we have Zoom coming through with, uh.
As well as, uh, Danielle Kimback, who's the attorney representing, uh, the developer. And Julia Han is here tonight. And Stephen Yanowitz, who is the developer. And they're going to go through an overview of the project. Uh, the process is tonight, you're introducing the ordinance for the redevelopment plan. It'll go to the planning board on December thirteenth for a consistency review with the master plan. And then assuming it's approved, it'll come back to the commissioners on December fourteenth for your public hearing and, and, uh, final reading.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll leave, I'll turn it over to, uh, uh, Stephen Yanowitz to, uh, to start the presentation. Stephen?
Good evening, guys.
Thank you.
Um. Or Danielle or Tiffany, Danielle, I'll let you take it away. Okay.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, they appreciate the opportunity to come here and make this presentation to you. Uh, we also appreciate the hybrid format of the meeting as, um, I'm going to have to sign off a little before six for, um, another hearing, but if this is not complete, that's why Julia Han, um, my colleague is there in the room with you. Um, so I'm here tonight on behalf of Ventnor Holdings LLC. There, uh, for the introduction of this Wellington Avenue redevelopment plan, uh, for the property known as Block three oh three, lots two point oh one and two point oh two. It's located on Wellington Avenue as you just entered the city of Ventnor. Um, Ventnor Holdings has owned this property for ten years. Um, they had sold lot two point oh two and they retained ownership of two point oh one. And approximately ten years ago, when they came into this ownership, they subdivided the two lots. Uh, the lot two point oh two was developed with the Dollar General. That's still there today. Um, but lot two point oh one has remained underutilized despite their expansive marketing efforts over the years. So over the last few years, uh, we've worked with the city to create an attractive plan to rejuvenate the property and bring it back to productive use and become this gateway to the city. In twenty eighteen, the property was designated as an area on redevelopment. And while we worked through a few drafts of a redevelopment plan, um, the intervening market just never drove it to the point to get it to a point to adopt it. Um, but now we're here today, you know, with a plan that we're ready to move forward on. So the plan that's going to be presented today by our planner, uh, Tiffany Morrissey, it's for a self-storage facility and there'll be outdoor storage for boats, RVs, uh, and other vehicles to the rear. Um, these are not new uses. They have been presented before in the draft redevelopment plans. Uh, we've just done a little bit of refining to, you know, work with the current proposal that works in today's market, um, and modernize the design. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Tiffany, um, who can present the PowerPoint we prepared and answer any questions that the council may have.
And I'll keep it very short and sweet, um, because I think the pictures are going to do more than my, um, overview is going to do. But, uh, when we began this process, and again, I'm Tiffany Morrissey, when we began this process, we looked at the, uh, draft redevelopment plan that was prepared in two thousand and eighteen. And that draft redevelopment plan had several iterations and options for development on this property. Um, at this point, given the market, given the economy, given what works on this property and what there is a need for, uh, we've come up with this proposal for a, um, indoor self-storage facility. And it would have the RV and boat storage in the rear of the property. We did have to make some minor amendments to the initial redevelopment plan to ensure that this development would work on this property. Uh, given much of the stormwater management changes and flood hazard regulations, we, we looked at different, uh, things relative to the height of the building and how it would fit on the property. If we can skip to the next slide and, um, go into just the pretty picture for you. So this is the existing condition of the property. You can see that it has, um, hasn't been maintained. We were, we would be taking down half of the building that's out there. The Dollar General would stay. The other half of the building is on the, the other lot and we would maintain that building line with the Dollar General. And then if you go to the next picture. Thank you. Um, so here are some Google Street View, so you can see what the property looks like today. Um, not much really there that's exciting or interesting, um, but maintained on some level in terms of, of what you see as you drive down Wellington. And then the last slide is our artistic rendering of how we believe the facility will look on this property. Now, this artistic rendering does not show the Dollar General next to the self-storage building. Um, but that would be to the right of the building. This is designed, um, we, we looked at colors and, and techniques, um, that would work with what's been happening on the property next door. And you have your, your shopping center that's being redesigned and redeveloped and the new, um, restaurant on the corner has that gray-black look. So this brings in some of the tans and some of the black and gray that's on, that kind of ties it together. Hope, uh, we believe it creates a nice, beautiful entrance as you come down Wellington Avenue. So the redevelopment plan that's up for introduction would enable this development with the proposed building heights and setbacks. So it would be a zero setback to the existing Dollar General. The building height, um, would be up to, I believe it was fifty feet. Um, because of the flood hazard regulations to make sure that we were able to, uh, work with, with the regulations. And the appearance of what we propose to do is shown before you on the screen. So if you have any questions, we are all here to help answer those questions. And if you need us to go through the details of what's in the redevelopment plan in, in fine tooth comb, I'm happy to do that, but I think the overview, um, provides enough for the introduction at this point.
Thanks Tiffany. I, I would agree that this is good for the introduction. Um, I think the planning board will dive into the details of the, uh, and, and just so happens that our solicitor for the planning board is sitting in tonight for our, our city commission, so he'll, he'll see it twice. Um, some of the comments that, that I would want to see and address would be buffering around the back where we are going to have the outdoor storage. Um, but from the aspect of looking at the building coming in, I think this is a, a good design from a color standpoint. Um, the first plan we saw was bright red and that kind of didn't, kind of didn't really go with, with what was happening, like you said, next door at the Plaza and, and Prevenza, the restaurant there on the corner. I think this is a nice blend in with that.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, this looks beautiful and this is the entrance into our city, so I think it's really important for it to look like you, you're, you're showing here with the landscaping and the plannings, because again, this is the entrance into our city. I am a little bit concerned about the boats. I, I don't want it to look like a, a, you know, I don't want it to be perceived like a junkyard. You know, when you go buy a, a junkyard with all the cars and the motors, like for it to look like something like that. Um, I don't know if those boats are going to be visible from the road. I would hope they're not. Maybe you can, um, talk about that a little bit.
Yes, so, um, and I'm going to just, I have to zoom in on a screen here and so.
Or maybe if we go to one of the other slides.
Yeah, to the first slide in the presentation and I have it open on my computer, so I can see it as well. But the boats would be in the rear of the property and we do propose, um, fencing as on the plan. So yes, we, we don't want to build a building like this and then all you see are boats and RVs. Um, we agree with that sentiment and we, we do propose to have the screening of fencing and really to primarily put the, these structures, this, that, that storage behind the building. So you can see, um, and you can't see my, I see someone has their cursor. So mostly the storage is in the back and then there would be fencing that would surround that down the side property line.
Yeah, I know RVs can be pretty big and so could boats, so I'm just having a hard time.
So there's a grade change there and we're not going to, uh, I don't know how much we're really raising the grade in the rear. So with the, with the retaining and grading and design of the site, we can ensure that we make that they're not as visible and that's not a primary feature. I think there's enough we can do with design mechanisms to ensure that.
That would be something we look at in the planning board.
Because it is a lower property and we are lifting up the building and there's going to be some improvements on the site that we have to do to facilitate that.
It's visible and not visible, two different things. Okay, thank you.
Good comments. I mean, that's stuff that planning board will look at for buffering.
Yeah. Don't want to see it from the road.
Yeah, and there's a retaining wall. That's what that dark line is that goes down the side. So with the retaining wall and the fencing, I don't think, and, and with the grades, I think it'll be easy enough to ensure that it's screened from view.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So this is the start of, of the process, so we'll, we'll push through that. All right, thank you. Is that everything you guys have?
Unless you have any other questions, that's what we have for now.
Leo, Tom, you guys have anything? Good. All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor, and everyone.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have our department head reports. We have public works and grants. We have Ed Stinson, our city engineer. Jump in first, Ed.
Thank you, Mayor. On the screen, um, Jim Pakanowski is kind enough to put up the report that I handed out to everyone. Uh, so I'll, I'll try to just cruise through it pretty quickly for everyone. The, we start with the projects that we've, that were completed in twenty twenty-three. Uh, so this is our capital report for the end of twenty twenty-three. Uh, first project listed is our lifeguard headquarters, a new building that, uh, we constructed. Um, that has been completed this year, the pier kiosk, uh, which is where our pier masters stay during the, during the season on the pier. That's been completed. The rehabilitation and building construction of well number four, that's a potable drinking well that we have on our public works site. Uh, it's an old building that was rehabbed and an older well that also was rehabbed. Uh, the next improvement was an, um, an ESIP project, an energy system improvement project that was citywide. Uh, we replaced the sports lighting um, on the, on the sports, the, the football fields and the baseball fields down at Titus Field. We replaced LED lighting on all municipal buildings. Uh, we installed LED street lighting throughout the city. Uh, we winterized, um, all the municipal buildings. We replaced the roof at our public works garage. Uh, we've replaced the rooftop units here at City Hall with new higher efficiency units. Um, and then some, some minor work down at, uh, Public Works. We also installed two, uh, electric vehicle charging stations, one here at City Hall and also one at Public Works. We completed the first, first floor door replacement here at City Hall. Uh, we reconstructed Dudley Avenue, Oxford Avenue and Marshall Avenue in Ventnor Heights. Uh, we replaced the outfield fence and sod at the Little League Field. Uh, we cleaned and videoed the storm sewer system on Ventnor Gardens Plaza and Fulton Avenue. We completed Ocean Avenue curb and sidewalk replacement right here next to City Hall. And we did the landscape improvements at the Suffolk Avenue Recreation Complex. That's on the perimeter and the interior. The projects that are under design or starting construction right now. Uh, we just started on the remove and replace of water main on Cornwall Avenue, Monmouth Avenue and Lafayette Avenue. That's a big project, so uh, we're going to start serious construction on Lafayette Avenue on Monday. Um, and about a month there, and then we will move to the Cornwall Monmouth and that's, that's going to take probably about two months, so everybody be ready for, uh, some detours there. Um, we, we have a project for the, the new ban shell at Newport Avenue that's been submitted to the DEP for, um, for CAFRA permit. And we should be hearing from them, uh, the end of this month, the beginning of December. We also have Little Rock and Ventnor Avenue pedestrian improvements. This was a DOT grant for safe streets to tra, um, transit. It's a three hundred thousand dollar grant to construct a pedestrian crossing signal at that intersection of Little Rock and Ventnor. Um, and that has been awarded to South State and we're looking to set up a pre-construction meeting within the next couple of weeks and that construction should start weather permitting in the late winter, sometime February, March, I would.
And that particular improvement is focused on, uh, a handicap person in that area.
That is correct.
To allow them to safely cross the street there, so.
That is correct.
Good, good project.
Next on the list is the traffic signal optimization project on Ventnor Avenue. That's at five intersections. This is on our municipally-owned Ventnor Avenue.
Right.
So between Dorset Avenue, or actually from Oxford Avenue down to Baton Rouge. That is also funded by a grant. That's the, um, SJTPO grant of one point six million dollars. Uh, we just received federal highway authorization to go out to bid. We expect that those bids will be, come in around three million dollars is the, is the estimate. Um, and that'll be sometime towards the end of the year. Next project is the replacement of the Winchester Avenue bulkhead from Jackson Avenue to Marion Avenue. This is funded, um, entirely or should be funded entirely by a FEMA grant and an Orsted grant. And, uh, Mr. Rotella confirmed that the Orsted grant, we believe, is in a trust, so that, that should still happen. We're in, uh, for DEP permits for that. Likewise, we should hear the end of this month or the beginning of December on that, uh, those permits and then out to bid from there. So that project, we expect to be constructing sometime, um, early next year. And the, uh, let's see, the next one is the Lower Ventnor Heights Resiliency Project. So, uh, we awarded a contract to De Blasio Associates. If you recall, they did the resiliency study. Came up with recommendations for, um, physical improvements in the heights to, to help reduce the flooding. Those improvements include two pump stations, one on the Atlantic City side of Dorset Avenue, one on the Margate side of Dorset Avenue. Uh, they're under, um, design right now. And we're expecting that design to be complete and then to submit for permits sometime early next year.
And grant funding.
And then, and then Mr. Rotella will report, we're, we're applying for grant funding for that. Uh, and the next project is the Atlantic Avenue Traffic Signal Optimization Project. That's a replacement, so it's, it's not as impaled as Ventnor Avenue, so it's not all new traffic signal, um, poles, the, the, um, sidewalk improvements, that's Ventnor Avenue on Atlantic Avenue. We're looking at just replacing the controllers so that we can have better, um, synchronization of those, um, traffic signals on Atlantic Avenue. Mr. Rotella is also, has submitted an application for CMAC funding for that project and he'll report on that, but I believe we can expect an answer sometime in the spring.
With that, Ed, is that's just inside the internal workings? Are we, is there any way we can change out the, the heads, the lights themselves? Is that, as soon as we do that, we have to do the whole intersection?
I can check on that. I, I, there, there's a point, but I believe we can, under maintenance, we can improve the.
Okay.
The heads. So.
Add that as a different project and move that as, as we get the dollars to improve each intersection, because those lights have been up there for quite some time. If we can go to LED, it's just more efficient.
With, with that, that plate on the back.
Yep.
Yep, okay. And the projects that are about to start design, but they'll be coming. We, we've all heard about the lead service line replacement program. Uh, we have submitted for funding, several sources of funding, as Jim will report on that, but that's moving forward. We're going to need to, um, we have ten-year window to complete that. There's about, there's over five thousand, um, services that will need to be replaced. And we're looking at phasing them, um, into several years and working on the funding right now. Next is your, is your Army Corps Beach Nourishment Project. We've met with the Army Corps and the DEP. Uh, they did receive funding, so we are back on schedule for that. Uh, that'll be coming soon. They're, they're doing the design now. Their hope is a spring bid. A lot of times that pushes back to a fall construction, but that's, that's the timeframe. Anytime between a spring bid to a, a fall construction. Uh, we'll be doing some, we'll be on your agenda tonight is, is recommendation to award, um, engineering design for storm sewer improvements on Ventnor Gardens Plaza and also on Fulton Avenue. Uh, my recommendation is to, to award those, um, design projects to Paulistina and Associates. And, uh, then hopefully we'll see those improvements next year as well.
And those two were tied to the work we did video on cleaning out those, those lines.
That, that is.
Found issues there. Now we want to go back in and, and design to fix those issues.
That is correct.
We think that'll improve a lot of the drainage that we have during storms on those areas, Ventnor Gardens Plaza and then Fulton Avenue, so.
Yes.
Definitely found some issues that are causing slow drainage in that area, so.
Yep.
Are these things in the ground, not visible?
Yes.
Okay.
For the most part.
Yeah.
For the most part. The sewer bypass at DPW, that lift station, there will probably be some soap, some buffs, but that's in the public works.
Yeah, that's, that's in our yard at, at our main plant. Nobody will see that. Yeah, but the work, yes, the work on Fulton Avenue will be underground. Uh, that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ed. All right, Mr. Rotella?
Evening, Mayor.
Busiest, busiest guy in Atlantic County.
Commissioner, congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, I'm going to go over a few things. Um, don't want to cover the same things that Ed covered, but we will, uh, talk about some of the applications that have recently been submitted and some opportunities for the, for the city. Um, first, as you know, uh, we have submitted an application for the Boardwalk Preservation Fund. A hundred million dollar fund is put together by the state. Um, the state specifically requested that each community provide their, a comprehensive plan, uh, the complete plan of what is needed in the community. So in Ventnor's case, we submitted the, for the reconstruction of the boardwalk, uh, from, uh, the Atlantic City boundary to Margate boundary. Uh, total cost is about twenty-six million dollars. Uh, we proposed a ten percent match, which required a grant of twenty-three point seven million dollars. Um, the state is evaluating those now. We will probably hear a decision, uh, in late December, early January. Uh, this fund, eh, these funds are American Recovery Act funds, so they have to be spent. The deadline right now is the end of twenty twenty-six, uh, may be extended, but they can't assume that right now, so they're moving at a fast pace, which I think benefits us all.
I think the fact that we matched the deadline with our estimate should give us.
That's right. I agree. Uh, and, uh.
Trying for anything, right?
And we're, we're also looking for alternative funding. Um, and, uh, uh, as you've seen, um, in, in, in Wildwood, uh, they have received, uh, funding for their boardwalk through state budget allocations. Uh, other communities have received earmarks through the federal government for boardwalk improvements. Uh, USDA has provided funding for boardwalk improvements. So now that we have a comprehensive plan of what's needed, despite whatever the state allocation is, there's other options that we'll look at.
I spoke to Jane Aselta about that, the USDA. They were, they were very interested in, in the project, especially if we were to get some other funding. They like teaming with everybody, so.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Good conversations with her.
Good. Um, second application that, uh, uh, Mr. Stinson referred to is the, the CMAC application for the, uh, synchronizing signals on Atlantic Avenue. That was about six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars for construction, design and inspection. We expect to hear on that probably early next year. Um, and, uh, so we'll, uh, we'll report back on that. We're also working on an application right now for the, uh, DCA firefighter's grant, which is up to seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, for, um, firefighter equipment. The, um, the other thing, uh, as, as Mr. Stinson mentioned, uh, we have several applications before the I-Bank, uh, for projects. The I-Bank provides for, um, both low-interest loans, but also, uh, they are the recipient of all the federal infrastructure loan, uh, Infrastructure Act funding. So when the Infrastructure Act was passed two years ago, there was a lot of funding for lead service lines. That money goes to the I-Bank. The I-Bank matches that with their funding. And in our case, uh, up to, uh, for a ten million dollar project, five million of that would be principal forgiveness, really a grant. So that's why the projects, the, the city project is being divided into phases equal to about ten million dollars to maximize the, the amount of grant funds that we can receive. Um, we, our total application is, has been submitted, it's around sixty million dollars for that project. Uh, we are also, again, you mentioned Jane Aselta. We're also, um, working with your CFO and others to pre-qualify for USD aim funding. Because there's things that they can pay for that the I-Bank cannot. For example, uh, we talked about road paving after the project's completed. They're the kind of things that they can pay for, so we're, we're trying to leverage one grand against another.
Good.
Um.
We're part of the accelerator project that, that came.
The accelerator project is pretty exciting. I mean.
Ten communities in the state that got that. We feel pretty lucky to get, be involved in that, so.
Definitely, and part of the reason that you qualified was that your application was in a year ago.
Right.
You, you started dealing with the I-Bank and state a year ago. Most towns did not. And, uh, since you were aggressive and you met the qualifications, you were selected, so.
When, when I met with Jane, it first came up, like, you know, we're we're under ten thousand people. She's, no, no, we have you down as ten thousand, one hundred. I'm like, we're definitely ninety-three, ninety-four hundred people in that. We, we just got through the census, we know. So that helped. You had to be under ten thousand residents. So that helped. You had to be under 10,000 residents to, to qualify. So it's a rural funding. We're not necessarily rural, but we're small.
So, uh, you know, there's, there's a myriad of things that that can help with. Certainly, public education is going to be an issue. You know, we just talked about a construction project that, you know, people were, when you're doing construction all over the city, there's going to have to be a lot of public information.
Yep.
And that's something that they can help with. And, uh, the, uh, other communities have done that very well. Uh, we're being told that they may be able to leverage our engineering.
Yes.
Uh, they have engineerings, engineers onboard, engineering for a project of $60 million project is significant. Uh, so if they can leverage our engineering, then that's ideal. Uh, they also want to work with the city regarding capital cost. Again, you know, we're, we're looking at basically the I Bank application is kind of the, the floor. That's what we, we're applying for, but we want to reduce that by other grants. So if there's other funding that they can come up with that we can pursue, that's more to the benefit of the city. So it's kind of like having your own separate consultant on lead service lines that you're not paying.
Like that.
Which is a good thing.
Not that we don't mind paying for good service, but if I can get it for free, I want that.
Right. And, and, uh, you know, they've been fairly aggressive because there's, you know, as you saw in the last week, there were several articles in the papers about, about this program. So, uh, a lot of highs are on the program.
They had an event to unveil the 10 cities up in, uh, Newark, I think it was on Monday. Just, they invited me to come up. I just couldn't get up there for that, but it was early in the morning. But it was, it was nice. They did talk to me. They did call me and talk to me about it. I gave them the quote. So it's, we're, we're happy to be part of it.
Uh, we also have an application in that, that dovetails with the lead service line project to upgrade source, uh, sewer lines throughout the city for $11.2 million before the I Bank as well. Um, and they are, I'm going to think if there's anything else. There are the major things that we're working on right now. As far as moving forward, um, FEMA is now accepting grant applications for, uh, resiliency projects. Uh, that's one thing to keep in mind. Uh, New Jersey EDA has a couple of new programs that can help communities like Vender. One is they have a asset activation program that the city can apply for. It's a $50,000 grant to look at activating vacant property that you own in the community. So if there is any properties that you're looking at, that you want to look at the marketability of them or feasibility of development or whatever, to kind of push uh, redevelopment of those sites, that's an option. They also have a new program that, uh, was just released in the last couple of days that provides for land acquisition. Uh, it could be, uh, it can be, uh, land acquisition and it can be for, um, you know, to, to, uh, you know, convert a site that is, um, is not being used now. It can be for, to convert it to a park or parking or, you know, other uses like that. It can also be used to, um, purchase a site that you want to pursue economic development on. So, uh, that program is first come, first served. They only, they have a, a small piece of amount of money. Uh, again, the American Recovery Act money, so it has to be spent quickly. And, um, uh, but you have to apply uh, soon for that, those funds.
Right.
So, uh, there's, there's, uh, various opportunities and as things, uh, uh, as we learn about things, we certainly, uh, let your administrator know.
Jim, thank you. You do a great job for us every year. Um, you're the most successful grant writer I've ever run across. So you do a great job for a lot of towns and we appreciate you helping us. Uh, next up, we kind of already hit most of our capital discussion under Mr. Stinson's report. There's really nothing more there. We're going to go into our workshop. Um, we'll go through our agenda items one by one, discuss them, uh, and then have open public on each of those. And then we'll go into our formal meeting. So first up, we have our minutes, which we don't have any of. Uh, we don't have those ready from last month's meeting. The first thing we'll go into is an introduction of ordinance 2023 dash zero two two, which is, uh, adopting the well and can have a redevelopment plan, which we just heard that presentation, presentation on. And what that does is it gives our planning board the ability to start their review of that document. Look for consistency in our, with our master plan as well as give them ideas on how to, um, uh, improve the site like you were talking about, Maria. Um, and those are important items. It is our entrance. As Tim would say, it's our handshake, uh, coming into, coming into town. So something very important to us. Any questions on, on how that proceeds? And then they'll come back here for, to approve that ordinance after, after the process. Uh, next up, we will have ordinance, public hearing and adoption, an ordinance 2023 dash zero two one, which is designation eligibility for exemption and, and from defined contribution retirement program and repealing ordinance 2009 24. This defines position, positions that are eligible. They made some changes in that program. And, uh, Tom Chikarone went through that very, in very good detail when we introduced it last two weeks ago. Any questions with that one?
Nope.
We'll go through resolutions. We're going to add one tonight. Uh, the resolution 2023 three four zero through three sixty two. Uh, we'll do those by consent. First resolution is 2023 three four zero. Uh, and that is, uh, sub grant award to accept sub grant award for the federal fiscal year 2023 of emergency management. $10,000 enhances our city's ability to protect against various emergency events, floods, fire, and anything that we might have. Um, so we will, we'll accept that grant. Questions there?
Nope.
I'm just going to keep going unless you stop.
I went through them earlier.
Okay, good. Next one's, uh, 2023 three four one is to submit a grant application. You heard Mr. Rotella talk about this next grant agreement with New Jersey Partner Community Affairs for rescue plan. This is not the one you talked about, Jen. That's coming up next year. Okay. So this is for rescue plan firefighter grant, which assists us with protective gear upgrades. Um, just as a comment, and I would, going to keep it for my, my comments during commissioner comments, but we did have an active fire here in the city yesterday, um, on North Troy Avenue, 109 North Troy Avenue. Fire and police were there. No injuries were reported. Um, working to see how well, how badly damaged the structure is. So we want to make sure those guys are protected because they run towards events that we, most of us run away from. So want to make sure they're protected as much as possible. And thank them for what they, they do every day. 2023 dash three four two is to refund Kevin Richmond, the amount of $20 for surrendering his ice cream license. Um, yeah, his ice cream ID badge, excuse me, from 2019 zero zero four. That's ordinance 2019 zero zero four. Three forty three is contact person for employment practices liability helpline. We'll be naming Lisa Hand, our city clerk, to the joint municipal insurance fund as that contact person. Just another job for you, Lisa. That's all.
Well, actually, we're adding Jim Packenhouse.
Okay.
He is, um, Jeff representative.
All right.
And we're adding, uh, Mr. Sisarone, since he's our administrator now.
Okay.
Chickeroe. Chickeroe.
Did you say Sisarone? Is that what it was?
I apologize. It's been a long. I'm still catching up on my sleep.
At least she didn't say Mr. Lumberjack.
And that's been the title for the day. It has been. Um, resolution three forty four is a tax abatement for block two fifteen, two point oh two, uh, third, three oh four North Dudley Avenue. Three four, there's a couple of these coming through. Three forty five is also a tax abatement for block 18, lot 101, 5904 Boardwalk. Uh, three forty six is tax abatement for block two twenty one, lot 5.02, three twenty two North Harvard Avenue. Three forty seven is a, uh, appointing municipal emergency management coordinator and deputy municipal emergency manager, management coordinators. Uh, Chief Cahill of our fire department, um, up in this will last till 2026. And Donna Peterson, Tom, uh, Halpin and Joe Izziri, uh, will all be the deputies. They do a great job for us as well. And they, they get a lot of these funding, um, grants. They, they work through Jim, I think a lot as well, but they, they chief comes up with them and finds a lot of those as well. All right. Three forty eight is a, um, tax refund for an overpayment on their taxes. I think it was something with an auto pay with their company seemed to be. Next one's a hard one for us. Um, Mr. Stinson, who you heard from this evening, is actually retiring at the end of this month. He's been our city engineer for almost six years now. Um, he's been a great help to me, to Maria, I think, and, and to the whole city. Uh, he's been a great addition to our staff. Um, he will certainly be missed. We're not going to do Thursday mornings now. Uh, but, uh, on the greener pastures, and we'll certainly be in touch. He's, he's going to be, he's not going far. So we know where you live. We know where you live. So we want to thank you for the years you gave us and the expertise that you gave us. You know, you were, you were both public works and city engineer, which is a hard task. Um, so I want to thank you for that. So much appreciated. So we will pass that resolution tonight, accepting his resignation, which I might vote no one.
Me too.
Right? What would happen? Leo, what would happen if that happened?
It's got to stay.
Resolution three fifty, uh, moving on from that, sorry. Uh, determine the form and other details of, uh, let's see, what's this? Construction financing program. This is the water bank to be used for principal amount of up to $10 million, providing issuance and sale of such note to New Jersey Infrastructure Bank, the I Bank, authorizing the execution of delivery of such note. This is what Mr. Rotella was talking about for the lead service line replacement. That's a filing and lose applications to request those, those, those funds. Three fifty one is also tied to that. Um, talks about the I Bank short-term construction loan from New Jersey I Bank under construction financing program. And again, that's all tied to phase one A of our, uh, lead line replacement program. As you can see, these are very expensive projects that are being mandated to us by the, by the state of New Jersey. Um, but at least we're getting help, which is a good thing. Um, three fifty two is the personnel and, and policies procedures manual. Uh, Tom Chikarone went through in detail. I think you, you went through that a little bit last, last meeting as well, um, to change it out to make the JIF changes that there were requested, correct?
Yes, Mayor. It's basically a brand new, uh, personal procedures manual. Uh, most, I, I should say a good deal of it was in the previous one, but every two years the JIF puts out a new model policy, uh, and you're, we're required as members uh, to adopt certain portions of the model that are mandatory. So that, that's what this does. This gets us in compliance with the JIF requirement. There are also a bunch of things that are hybrid specifically to Ventnor's, uh, policies. Uh, and this basically re adopts those as well.
Okay. All right. I'm sure we'll hear a lot about that at the league next week. Uh, they're always big at the league. We have to go for our certifications each year. Uh, three fifty three is authorizing the transfer appropriations, $80,000. Amy, is that, that's just moving money from different parts of the budget to cover other things in the budget. All right. This is the time of year we end up doing that at the end of the year. Resolution three fifty four, authorizing the mayor to execute an employment agreement with Richard Santoro for the position of public works superintendent. I know we did some of this last two weeks ago, but with Ed's leaving on the, this, uh, end of the month, we're changing the title to superintendent, not assistant superintendent. Mr. Santoro is here tonight. Welcome him to our team. We're, we are very excited to have you here. Um, uh, he's, he's been in, in our offices already for the last, uh, week or so. Uh, Ed's brought him through, met, met the crew um, over at Public Works and, uh, pretty excited to have Rick on board. I've worked with him for the last nine years at CRDA. Um, their loss is our gain, our huge gain. Um, I still get the sly eye looked at me from my boss at CRDA. So, um, that'll be fun on, on Monday. But anyway, welcome, Rick. We really appreciate you taking on, and Rick lives here in town. So that's, that's a great addition to our, you know, from our community to our staff. Um, Rick is an excellent manager of, of personnel. Um, if you know Atlantic City at all, um, you can see the difference from where the Sid group in Atlantic City took care of the city, cleaned the streets, made sure graffiti was taken care of immediately. When you go outside of Sid, you'll notice a difference here. And this is no shot at, at, at Mr. Stinson and the work there. It's a different, uh, expertise that Mr. Santoro has that, that I think is going to be well realized here in, in the city. So, uh, we look forward to that. Sorry to go off on a little tangent there. Anyway, um, three fifty five is appointing Amy Stover as our CFO. She has, uh, been with us for quite some time now and has done a great job in the interim. And we're thrilled to have her come on as our CFO. You want to talk about that at all?
Amy came to us a few years ago as, uh, from the county. She was the controller there and, or comptroller. And, um, started out, came here for a specific role and then we lost a key employee and she kind of learned that very quickly payroll. You know, we got to keep people paid. So she, you know, we kind of like derailed her a little bit for payroll and then, um, our CFO left for another municipality and she assumed the role and she took the, uh, review class to get her license as a certified municipal finance officer and passed the test the first time she took it. And, um, for those of us who know a little bit about that test, that's a big deal. Um, to pass the first time. So I, I know we've talked about this before, but it's a very big deal to pass the first time and she is now licensed and she can assume the role um, for the municipality as the certified, uh, chief financial officer. So congratulations. And, uh, we look forward to having you here for many years.
Amy's not one to talk very much. Here's the numbers. Um, next resolution is three fifty six, and that is hiring part-time school traffic guards. Uh, Stanley Koch, I'm hoping that's spelling or pronunciation, and Deborah, um, Bambino to our crossing guard crew. Resolution three fifty seven is appointing Amy Winterbottom to clerk level two. Uh, Amy came to us. She's part-time with us. Um, no, she's not part-time. Dawn, Dawn is part-time. Um, she will be moved up to clerk two. She's shown really great, um, intuitiveness and moving into that job. And it's been with a short time, but it's shown that she can do the job of, of that, that promotion. So moving her up. Resolution three fifty eight is again, two projects, the next two are projects we just talked about with Mr. Stinson. Ordering the Palestine Associates LLC for design and construction, management services of Ventnor Gardens Storm Sewer Repairs, not to exceed $54,225. This is to design those repairs that we found, uh, that were needed during the inspection of those pipes. Uh, this will actually be partially shared with Margate because they, they use that, some of their water comes our direction, uh, as part of that pump station and those lines. Uh, three fifty nine, similar project out on Fulton Avenue, uh, for $67,000 to Palestine and Associates, um, LLC for the design and construction management services of that project. And then three sixty is a resolution authorizing, uh, selling Ed Stinson his issued, stated, his city issued desktop PC for fair market value. I think 250 bucks. Is, is that what that has been valued at? So it must be sentimental to him. He wants to keep that with him.
He was calling in my office.
Yeah. The keyboard. And then three sixty one is, uh, appointing utilities engineering LLC as a city engineer for professional services through the non-fair and open, uh, open process. Um, so utility services, uh, that is a fancy name for Matt Doran. That is Matt Doran's LLC. Um, and many here in the city will know Matt. He has worked here for years. Um, he's, I've known Matt probably my whole career as Ed. Ed was a protege of, of, of Matt. So we're, we're getting the, the teacher now. So, so we're, we're pretty happy about that. We got a good mix going and, and there'll be great communication between Mr. Stinson and Mr. Doran. Uh, we look forward to bringing him in on December 1st.
If I may make one comment, I've known Matt for a long time. I'm looking forward to working with him again. Um, separating the two functions now between the public works superintendent and the engineer. The, the engineering component is expected to average perhaps eight to 12 hours a week. So it's very much a part-time thing.
Yep.
It's not that we're, you know, bringing him on in, in a full-time capacity.
Yes. Thanks, Tom. I should have mentioned that, that that is a, is a part-time position at this point. Um, the one we're adding from the bench is resolution three sixty two. And this is to join in some litigation with, um, a group from Long Beach Island that is opposing the, uh, windmills off our coast turbines. I shouldn't say windmills. The wind turbines off our coast. Uh, we did get the, the, the news that Orsted is pulling out. You do have Atlantic shores and Atlantic shores lease area is still right off our coast. Uh, so we will be participating in this litigation with, um, Barnagat Light Beach Haven, Flat LBI towns, uh, Harvey Cedars Ship Bottom Surf City. Uh, Brigantine just joined on to this, uh, this group as well. Um, I, I will be letting Mayor Sarah know that we are joining on with this group to file litigation uh, against what the, the process has really been to either slow down or stop these windmills off our coast. So, and I appreciate Maria and Commissioner Crewe's support on this. This was vetted through, through staff with, with each of their. And I appreciate Maria and Commissioner Crewe's support on this. This was vetted through, through staff with, with each of their, their desks, I'll say, so.
And it's limited to ten thousand dollars.
It is, that's correct.
So that's the limit of our exposure financially.
Yep, it is. That's all the resolutions we have. We'll go into bills and payroll. I don't have any discussion items, do you?
No.
You see any on the agenda? At this point, we'll open it up to, to the public, to any items that we've already talked about this evening. So if anybody has any comments here in the audience, or we'll do that first, and then we'll go on to Zoom. So anybody here have any comments? Please step forward, raise your hand, and be recognized. Seeing none, Jim, you want to ask on, on Zoom?
Anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak or comment on any of the items that were discussed or being voted upon, please make yourself known. No.
Okay. With that, I'll need a motion to close the work portion, workshop portion of the meeting and move into our regular session.
Motion to close.
A second, roll call.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langria.
Yes. We have no minutes to approve ordinance introduction twenty twenty-three dash zero twenty-two. I need a motion for that, please.
Motion.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langria.
Yes. Need a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero two-one.
Motion to open public hearing on twenty-three dash oh two-one.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone here that has any comments or questions on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero two-one, please make yourself known. Jim, online, please.
Anybody wish to comment or question on this ordinance?
Seeing none, motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Need a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero two-one.
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero two-one.
A second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langria.
Yes. Need a motion to adopt resolutions twenty twenty-three, three, four, zero to three sixty-two.
Motion to adopt as described.
A second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langria.
Yes. We need to approve bills and payroll. You have those, Amy?
The payrolls for this period, five hundred and eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, fifty-two cents. Payables for this period, four hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and sixty cents.
Need a motion? Do you have to recuse on a couple?
We pulled them.
Okay. Oh, because we don't have Commissioner Crewe here.
Motion.
A second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langria.
Yes. Any announcements? I have a list, but I'll let you go first.
I don't, I'm trying to think. I don't have anything.
Okay.
Yeah.
A couple of things. We have some events coming up before, because we don't have a second meeting in November, correct? That would be Thanksgiving.
That's correct.
So in early December, we have our tree lighting on twelve one. That'll be right here at City Hall. At, I think we do that at five, five-thirty, correct? The very next night, we will have our, our Twilight Parade on twelve two. That will start at five PM, starting at New Haven Avenue and running up to, I think it's Nashville Avenue, up towards North Beach. On twelve eight, we will have our manure lighting here at four PM. It's early. The rabbi has some things to do, so we have to be out here. And I think I have a wedding at quarter to five, so that I have to officiate, so.
Got Santa, too.
We have Santa Claus will be there. There's always refreshments provided by, I believe, our fire department. Fire truck. That night, I think it's a different night.
That's what I have on my calendar.
Okay. Twelve eight is, is Santa on the fire truck, right? Public restrooms at the pier and at the library also will close on the thirteenth, Monday. Okay. Tennis courts and the pier, pickleball courts, yeah. You're going to start calling the pickleball courts instead of the tennis courts. Or is the guys called the Taj Mahal, right? One thing I do want to do is, is Mark Greco and the Plaza assisted us with a huge sponsorship for the parade. They're essentially sponsoring a mummers band to come and walk and play in our parade. So they stepped up and sponsored, that's the largest sponsorship I think we got, of five thousand dollars to do that. So you see Mark out and around town. He does live here. Please thank him for him and his company, Ventor Plaza, to for sponsoring that. And lastly, I want to thank Lisa for going, you know, she mentioned it, how tiring it is to go through elections each year. We had an election on Tuesday, and it was run very well. We had some blips, but we resolved them, and I think we're going to resolve that more so for the next election.
Yes, we're working on it.
We're going to try and, try and resolve that issue with school. So thank you for what you did for that and keeping me informed. You know, I was pestering you. Because I was getting pestered from, from the county people. So where's your numbers? Where's your number? So, yeah, that's kind of all I have for announcements. We will have some construction projects starting this week. Lafayette Avenue, and then that'll be followed by Monmouth Avenue from Cornwall up to Harvard. So a lot of construction going on this time of year. Nothing, nothing else?
Nope.
All right, we'll open it up to public comment on anything this evening. Anybody here in the audience have any comments? Please step forward. Jim, you want to make an announcement?
Anybody on Zoom who wishes to question or comment on anything, please make yourself known.
Okay. Mary Ann, nothing? Nothing. You're the only public left. We got to. All right, we'll close the public portion. We have no executive session. I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Leo, thank you for standing in.